All right, welcome to the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority. May we have a roll call?
Yes, council roll call is council member Brodmann.
Here.
Barpetian.
Here.
Asakian.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Asatian.
Here.
Housing Authority members Ajinian, Vice Chair Ajinian.
Here.
Authority Member Asatian.
Here.
Brodmann.
Here.
Barpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Parazian. Chair Kasakian.
All right, may we have your report?
Yes. The posting of the agenda for the Tuesday, September seventeen, twenty twenty-four, Joint Public Meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was on September thirteen, twenty twenty-four, on the Bolton Board outside City Hall.
Great, and what's next?
Next is item one, Community Services and Parks Regarding Approval of the Glendale Homelessness Action Plan. A. Council Motion to Approve the Glendale Homelessness Action Plan Presented by the Glendale Continuum of Care and Direct Staff to Initiate Implementation of the Plan According to the Outlined Priorities and Strategies. Two, I mean B, Housing Authority Motion to Approve the Glendale Homelessness Action Plan Presented by the Glendale Continuum of Care and Direct Staff to Initiate Implementation of the Plan According to the Outlined Priorities and Strategies.
Great, Mr. Glani?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Asatian, Members of City Council, Vice Chair Ajinian, Members of the Housing Authority. I'm just going to invite Arsine Sayon, our Homeless Program Manager, to present this item for your consideration and approval.
Welcome.
Thank you, good afternoon, I'm gonna grab the... Good afternoon, Mayor Asatian, Members of the Housing Authority, Vice Chair Ajinian, Members of the Housing Authority. I'm here to provide a brief presentation on Glendale's, our homeless action plan. I'm gonna keep it very brief, I know you guys have a lot of items today, but if you have any questions at the end, or if you'd like me to elaborate on any of the slides, I'm more than happy to do that. So I'll jump right in. Okay, so the city of Glendale began the planning process for our Glendale Homeless Action Plan back in twenty twenty-two. This was a state requirement, the city is a recipient of state funds, homeless housing assistance program funds. So in order for us to continue to be the recipient, we had to complete a homeless action plan. But we also did this to really pull in our community members, to engage the public, our service providers, our agencies, to see where there are areas that we can improve on, any gaps, and what our current needs are for the homeless response system. So our action plan, once it's fully executed and approved by council, it will align with several local, state, and federal foundational principles and practices. We will be focusing on prioritizing housing first, advancing our racial equity efforts, including people with lived experience to guide us and to provide a lot of expertise and feedback. And then, of course, it does establish a sense of shared responsibility and accountability, and it allows us to maximize our resources. It does build off of our existing homeless response system, our existing funding sources. It does address Glendale's immediate and long-term needs. And it also, again, it really helped us solicit a lot of feedback from our community members when we were shaping our priorities and the strategies under this action plan. Some of this information I did go over a few weeks ago in my presentation. I do realize that some of the Housing Authority members were not present, so I'll just briefly cover our current funding and our, on our programs, and then I can answer questions at the end. So currently, our existing funding is a little over five point three million dollars. We get funding from state, local, countywide, and of course, federal funding. I did provide a breakdown of all of our programs and the percentage of funding that we currently receive. And these programs, you know, range from, you know, rapid rehousing, homeless prevention, street outreach, supportive services, and, you know, we've got the full range here as part of the presentation. Our primary source of funding is through HUD, Department of Housing and Urban Development. Annually, we compete for a little over two point nine million dollars to continue our existing homeless programs, our permanent supportive housing programs. I do come to council and Housing Authority for your approval each year. This two point nine million is for existing, those existing renewal projects. We also do get some emergency solution grant funds, this is another program that we receive funding for annually. That ranges anywhere between a hundred and fifty-five to about a hundred and sixty thousand. And this is our second source of funding for ongoing homeless prevention and rapid rehousing and outreach programs. The rest of the funding sources are either one-time, that could be multi-year grants, or just like ad hoc grants, that they come up, you know, once in a while. And of course, I actually didn't cover our general funds, I know we, we call it Measure S, but I know it was folded into the general funds now. We allocate, we just approved five hundred and eighty-eight thousand this past fiscal year for our Glendale Hotel Program and other types of landlord incentives and programs that help our, our clients here in Glendale. We do also allocate about four percent for staffing. Currently, the homeless services section has a staff of four, and only about four percent, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, is utilized for staff costs. A certain percentage of my time, thirty-nine percent of my time, and we also have a one-full-time coordinated entry systems outreach worker that's staffed here at City Hall. This is our current housing inventory, of course, this bed inventory does fluctuate, it will change based on funding availability and the number of clients that are enrolled in our programs. We have around three hundred and fifteen beds. This does not include our Emergency Housing Voucher Program, EHB. In the last two years, we were able to lease up around two hundred and twenty-five people. And it doesn't include Section Eight and the non-dedicated low-income housing projects in, in this group. So briefly go over this, you know, I won't go into all of the details, but I wanted to just provide an overview of our housing inventory. A little bit about our PIT count, I, I wanted to provide some information from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. I wanted to kind of break down our homeless count numbers, unsheltered versus our sheltered clients. With the exception of twenty twenty-one, we have actually seen more people in our sheltered programs during the night of the count than those who are unsheltered. So it's, it's interesting how it's been consistent since twenty twenty-three. We have about fifty-four, fifty-five percent of the clients in temporary housing programs on the night of the count versus about forty-four to forty-five percent that are unhoused, which I thought was quite interesting to see that trend and since twenty twenty. When you compare this to the overall county numbers in LA City, as you can see, county had over seventy-five thousand, LA City had over forty-five thousand, of which sixty-seven percent were unsheltered. In addition to that, in our Service Planning Area Two, Glendale falls under Service Planning Area Two in the county, there was a fifty, fifty-six percent increase in the sheltered population during the, the night of the count. As I've, I've previously mentioned, Glendale does share territorial boundaries with Spa Four, Metro LA. So, you know, if you see an increase in, in this area, obviously, that kind of tends to impact our city. We do tend to get a kind of a spillover inflow influx, I guess you could say, of clients in Glendale, and I'm, and I'm sure that other spas are actually experiencing that impact as well. So I just kind of wanted to provide a comparison in our local numbers versus what we're seeing in our surrounding jurisdictions or, you know, county in LA City. Systemful, very briefly, we submit a system performance report to HUD every year, and per our latest system performance measures, and this is ranging from October first, twenty twenty-two, to September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, we served a total of nine hundred and forty-seven persons. I do want to note that on the action plan, page ten, there was a minor discrepancy, it's not households, it's nine hundred and forty-seven persons. We have fixed that, and it'll be posted on our website by Friday. Of the nine hun- so, in total, we served over... I'm sorry, give me just one second, I lost... We served over two thousand two hundred and eighty-four unduplicated persons, of which nine hundred and forty-seven were enrolled in our housing programs. This ranges from permanent supportive housing, temporary housing, and homeless prevention. So about twenty percent were in homeless prevention, forty-six percent in permanent housing, and about thirty-eight percent in our temporary housing programs. Councilmember Brodmann, I know that you had asked to find out of the number of levers, of the one thousand two hundred and forty-seven levers during this period that left our system, where did these folks go, aside from the permanent housing exits? So four hundred and fifty-three households exited to permanent housing, but as, as you can see, the rest, there's a range. You know, homeless situations, we had six hundred and eighty people exit back into homeless situations out of the one thousand two hundred and forty-seven levers in our system. That's quite, that's a, that's a big number there. I wanted to, that's fifty-four percent of the, the clients that we served. About a hundred and thirty-one exited into temporary housing situations, that's about ten percent, and the forty-seven exited into institutional settings, that's, you know, around three percent. So a majority did exit back into homeless situations during this reporting period. With all that said, I wanted to just quickly talk about our community engagement sessions. So we held a series of community engagement sessions, in-person, virtual. Our flyers also included surveys, for those who were unable to attend our sessions, they were able to provide feedback as part of the flyer, the survey. We were hoping to gain more people with lived expertise during these discussions, we wanted to have them present. Unfortunately, we didn't have a great turnout, so what we did instead was, we actually plugged in the survey questions as part of our homeless point-in-time count survey, and we were able to receive responses from the eighty unhoused individuals that we came across on the night of the, night of the count. So that was kind of our way of involving them in this process when developing the action plan. So through our community engagement sessions, we did a SCOT analysis, you know, strengths, challenges, opportunities, threats, and all of the feedback that you see here was, all of the comments and the suggestions, recommendations, were collectively, you know, put together by our community members, our agencies, our providers, our board members, the public, various groups. So I was really happy to see everybody come together and have these robust discussions to figure out, you know, what are some of our strengths and challenges, what opportunities do we have, and, you know, also the threats, what we need to, to work on. I, I won't go through all of them in detail, but for example, the community, you know, talked about lack of, you know, education, community education regarding the programs that are available in our city. So, and the lack of coordination, collaboration between, you know, city departments, agencies, cities, you know, the county, countywide collaboration, not enough training for staff when dealing with the chronically homeless population, those who are hard to serve, who suffer from mental illness or any other type of substance abuse or illnesses. You know, and then, of course, lack of affordable housing, unwillingness from landlords to rent to some of our housing programs. So I, I won't go through the entire list, and limited mental health resources locally, that was a really big one, that we need to pull in more resources for local mental health services. NIMBYism, I mean, funding limitations, eviction protections that are phasing out. At the time when we were putting together this program, we were just, we were kind of phasing out of the COVID-nineteen programs and, and the grants that we received, so people were concerned, what's next? When all this funding goes away, what are we gonna do? Which included programs like Project Room Key. So inflation, of course, was another big one, costs of, costs of living and rent, you know, factored in with other, other issues like unemployment and whatnot. Opportunities, the community thought that we could pull in a lot of support from workforce, you know, partnership opportunities with workforce teams, mental health intervention and initiatives, more support from local hospitals, partnerships with our local hospitals, expanding and pulling in more providers from Service Planning Area Two. The city really pulling in a lot of resources from the county, not just tapping into our local resources. So the list goes on, and this is also included in our action plan for the community to also look through more in depth. With all that said, we developed five strategies, the five most important strategies, again, collectively. And we're hoping that these five strategies that I'm about to go over really increase transparency for everyone involved in the homeless response system. It increases participation among constituents, departments, providers, and funders, and leverages existing investments in homeless services and partnerships. And we really want to plan and invest in long-term service delivery infrastructure. I know that we have a lot of temporary solutions that we talk about, but we really want to plan ahead and come up with more long-term, cost-effective solutions, and just to align, enhance and align with our public resources. So the first strategy is interim permanent supportive and affordable housing, of course, that tends to be the number-one area of priority. The second strategy is countywide, citywide, interdepartmental, and community coordination and engagement, so strengthening our engagement. Intensive case management and expanded outreach. Homeless prevention and diversion was another big one. And then streamlining our current coordinated entry system, looking at ways that we can improve the system, and clarifying roles and responsibilities of each provider that receives funding from the city of Glendale. So, again, I won't go through everything here unless you would like me to, but I did feel that it was important to include this as part of the presentation. I also want to note that the action plan was supposed to be completed back in June of twenty twenty-three. Unfortunately, due to some unforeseen reasons, we, this plan was delayed. So this was kind of happening concurrently with our budgeting for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So I'm happy to say that, for example, the first area, increasing funding for hotel motel vouchers for winter months, and expanding rapid rehousing programs, shallow subsidy-type programs, the city did allocate about three hundred thousand dollars to support our year-round Glendale Hotel Program. We were at eighty thousand last year, so that's a significant jump to support the city, especially during the winter months, for non-congregate sheltering. Another area the public focused on was improving our partnership opportunities with the Glendale Housing Authority, looking at innovative ways to partner with them to increase permanent housing programs for our clients, such as, you know, allocating turnover vouchers for the unhoused population. So that was just, and then, of course, Measure H, that's a really big one, advocating for more funding and more support for, with the county for more Measure H funding.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What's a turnover voucher?
Oh, sure, Councilmember Brodmann, turnover voucher is any time a client utilizes a Section Eight voucher, if for whatever reason they exit the program, so they leave the program, the Housing Authority considers that as a turnover voucher, so they can actually take that voucher and assign it to somebody else who is technically in need. Those are called turnover vouchers.
But we do that as a matter of course, right? I mean, we don't sit on these vouchers.
We don't, but currently, we utilize those vouchers and pull from our existing waiting list for clients that might not be at risk or unhoused. So we do prioritize clients who are homeless in our community, there's obviously a process for that. But you can potentially utilize these turnover vouchers and prioritize the vouchers, for example, for homeless families or anybody who is experiencing homelessness in the community. That's something that other cities and COCs are doing, so this was just one of the recommendations that we had here. Okay, so another, another thing, basic needs assistance, it might seem small, but it makes a really big difference, is, yes, we have all of these programs for clients, but we really need to have enough funding to support their basic needs, whether that's, you know, landlord incentives, application fees, furniture, you know, food, clothing pantry, transportation, whatnot, the list goes on. And I'm happy to say that we have also seen an increase in funding in this area through our general funds to support our, our clients and our agencies. Operational efficiency, something that was mentioned was interdepartmental working group, potentially to produce a homeless housing plan. Again, foster collaboration, that kind of kept coming up among various groups and providers, city nonprofits, healthcare, just to kind of streamline services and avoid duplication, because sometimes we might be doing the same thing, and if we could streamline and work together, it'd have a greater impact. Staff training and development was another big area, especially training staff who are working with chronically homeless individuals and dealing with clients who have multiple, you know, vulnerabilities or health issues. How do we better work with those clients? And we're currently working to improve our assessment tools. So currently, our data does capture a lot of information on our clients, but we need to do a better job in the system of really getting down to more details, like race and demographics, adding additional categories, finding out why people are becoming homeless in the first place, right? So that's one area we're working on, is capturing this data far in advance to understand the root cause of their homelessness, and then also keeping a track of those who are becoming homeless for the first time. That's an area that we're keeping a close eye on. And then just in general, raising awareness in the community about homeless issues and the services offered by the COC, just to foster more collaboration from our community. That's... And I'll kind of briefly go over the rest. Countywide and citywide, we really want to strengthen our partnership with the Department of Health Services and Department of Mental Health. You know, with Measure H, we found that a lot of the resources were going straight to DHS and DMH, and they were funding a lot of these programs and beds, detox beds, institutional-type facilities that help some of the more chronically homeless or vulnerable clients. And we really want to look at this area and have more direct access to a lot of those resources. That was one area. And then also potentially securing local contracts with our mental health providers here, so that we have more access to the resources available. Another thing we'll be doing is, we're hoping to have updates for city council and the Housing Authority and our board members on more of a quarterly basis, enhancing our data management, improving our data so that we have more to report on. That way, we really identify what, where we need to be, or what services we need, or what, where the funding gaps. Won't go through a lot of that, intensive case management, exploring new funding partnerships for supportive services. Street medicine was brought up, adding on a street medicine team for our outreach teams, Care Court, and then continuing to fund evening and weekend outreach. So that's something we also want to look at, is to have a more consistent stream of funding to continue our outreach efforts on the weekends and evening hours done by our Glendale Police Department.
I have a question on that, actually. I know that as part of your report, and we've discussed many times, that you have a partnership with the Glendale Police Department. I'm interested to know what that partnership actually looks like. Do you have a case manager that goes out with PD on a weekly basis? Is it just a police department going out and then, if need be, calling you? And how can we be more supportive of that space? Because I think one of the ride-alongs that I did was really, I know that our PD has cards that they can give out, but there isn't really, like, engagement from the case management side while PD's out, so can you speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely, Mayor Asatian, that's a great point that you raise, and one thing that, expanding our outreach program, we're looking at more of a housing-focused outreach program, progressive engagement, which I've previously mentioned too. So currently, our hourly coordinated CES outreach coordinator that's staffed here at City Hall partners with the PD outreach team in addition to Essentia's outreach case manager. He also works very closely with PD, so anytime they get a call or they come across somebody, they'll pull in our teams for support. What we're doing, we have daily communication with the Glendale Police Department. They generally call us if they come across somebody, and we'll actually book the hotel stay for the clients, you know, get them into some kind of sheltering. If there's no shelter space, then we look at, you know, providing temporary hotel for the clients. But we are exploring this area, and we do want to expand, and we would need resources to do that, a lot of staff training. A lot of training needs to be involved, because we are working with clients at times that have been unhoused for ten-plus years in our community. So we're looking at different ways, I, I, we have a great partnership, and it's, it's working, but we would love to see how we can expand on the existing partnership.
How often do you have, do you run out of shelter beds?
Congregate shelter beds, like through Essentia?
Yeah, you just mentioned that, you know, you don't have shelter beds.
Often. Very often. Almost, majority of the time, when we do come across a person, we do end up usually providing them with hotel vouchers, because Essentia is at full capacity. We do work with them to get the clients on a sheltered waiting list, but, to be honest, sometimes it could take anywhere from thirty to ninety days to even get a client into the shelter because they are at full capacity. So...
Thirty to ninety days to get into a shelter?
Yeah. They are, they have a forty-five-bed shelter, so they are at full capacity.
Just to follow up on that, we can then go back, but, yeah. But generally, what'll happen is you'll put them in a hotel, right? They won't...
Absolutely.
I, I guess what I'm wondering is, if somebody's in a hotel, would they, why would they want to go back to a congregate shelter? Do you, or do you kind of tell them, you've got so many days in the hotel, and when the congregate shelter opens up, we require that they move over there? How does that work?
Councilmember Brodmann, we don't require them, so we can't force people to utilize the shelter bed. If they, they want to stay in the hotel program, they have thirty days. Because it's not limited resources, but we typically just place clients for thirty days, up to thirty days in our hotel program, until we can work with them to get them connected to service providers. If the client has a housing plan within thirty days, we will often extend that client for an additional thirty days. But we would like to see a shelter bed for them, congregate shelter bed, because there's other services that come with that onsite. There's mental health case management, employment case management, occupational therapy that's provided onsite. So if the clients are open and willing to go and take up, you know, a shelter bed, then we would want them to do that.
And do we see that that's a, a common kind of pipeline? We're putting them into the hotel until there's a shelter bed available, and then, and then they're moving over to shelter? Is that, is that not a common situation?
It's not a common situation, they usually do end up staying in the shelter program. And one of the things that we are doing with Glendale PD, because my team has access to countywide data, so if we come across clients on our streets, we actually look in the system to see where they're coming from. And if they're currently active with other organizations or agencies, we'll provide them the temporary sheltered stay. My staff, our outreach coordinator, will get in touch with the case manager from that organization and say, I've got your client here. It looks like they're almost in a housing program, or they're making progress on whatever program they're enrolled in. Can you please connect with your client? So we do the warm handoff. We want to provide the services, but acknowledging that we have limited resources, that's another way that we are trying to help clients divert them back into the programs that they're currently active in, and that has been happening actually quite a bit.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I hope I answered that question.
Is there, is there, sorry, if I, just want to finish this part. Is there a total number of days that they can stay at the shelter?
They go typically anywhere from forty-five to ninety days, but sometimes clients tend to stay much longer. It ranges. We've had families that have been at the shelter for a little bit longer, because they're waiting on housing programs to come through. But we can provide that data at, at a later time. I know that typically it does go past the forty-five days, sometimes not, but, you know, average, we've seen clients staying there longer.
Mr. Ajinian? And if I can ask my colleagues to please use the speaker card, so it'll, it's easier.
Yeah, yeah, it seemed that your priority area is strategies, so you've, you've covered everything, you know, it's quite, quite enormous. But are there any stones left unturned? Are there any areas that you need to explore?
All of these areas, I mean, to be quite honest, when we were developing this action plan, to be really honest, we wanted this to be a starting point, a blueprint. We've never had a homeless action plan in place, so we had to start somewhere. And a lot of these priorities, we have some overarching goals, and we, we don't have targets that we want to hit, with the exception of the three goals that I'll go over, because we want this plan to serve as an opportunity for us to explore and come up with innovative ideas that we haven't come up with. If there are any stones that are left unturned, hopefully, we'll discover that. There's always so much that we can do when it comes to homeless services and the homeless response system, but these were some of the, you know, more obvious recommendations and the strategies. But this, it doesn't end here. This plan is gonna be a working document, and it's gonna be up to us and our agencies and our community to really develop on this. So, to, to answer your question, yes. So to answer your question, yes.
Very good.
Okay, sure. Very briefly on, oops, going too fast here. Okay, so some of the goals, the three main goals that we came up with, you know, that we want to reach within the three years, is to decrease our unsheltered homelessness by 30%. Obviously, if we can decrease it by 80%, we would love to do that, but we wanted to have a starting point. I know that we've been seeing a gradual decrease in the last three years, two years, primarily two years. During COVID, we did see an increase, but that's because we had more programs. So that's one of the goals that we would like to set in place. Increase our shelter bed capacity by 80%. Again, we were doing this at the same time as budgeting for fiscal year 2324. I can confidently say that we have met this 80% capacity if we're looking at our latest homeless count numbers. We had 80 clients that were unhoused. And with the budget that we currently have, we can serve at least 81 clients in our Glendale Hotel Program for a minimum of 30 days. Now, it doesn't obviously solve the issue, but that's just a starting point for us to be able to offer a bed when clients, when we come across clients. Increase our rapid rehousing bed capacity by 60%. We really, really need to focus on rapid rehousing and homeless prevention. These are the two areas that we need to look at, coming up and securing additional funding for. Our agencies are really struggling with the rental assistance and, you know, the homeless prevention assistance. I think it has been kind of underrated in the past of how important these two programs are, especially homeless prevention. We haven't had a ton of money allocated in this area. But this is an area that we want to really heavily focus on. You know, how do we stop the inflow to begin with, right? Divert people out before they come through our homeless response system. It's a lot easier to tackle the issue right up front than wait until people escalate, you know, get further down into their homelessness. And then functional zero. Really, our aim is, we know we can't end homelessness, but we really want to come to a functional zero. We want to be able to have enough programs. And this isn't just temporary housing programs, although that's a starting point now. But we want to be able to provide a range of services. Our permanent housing programs, rapid rehousing, permanent supportive, and also supportive services to help people maintain their housing once they're stabilized. We want to make sure that homelessness is rare and brief. For everybody that's coming through our homeless response system, that is the goal that we're working towards. The plan did require the city to talk a little bit about, the state required the city to also talk a little bit about our equity efforts. So just very briefly, on an annual basis, my team will be looking at data and analyzing data in our system. We will have a racial equity analysis that we share with City Council and Housing Authority and our public. We are working on this, and we will definitely monitor the progress of the racial equity analysis. We did participate in the California Racial Equity Action Lab. This was a CalREAL project that the state had us participate in. It was a three-year initiative to really help us develop more reliable data, how to review data, how to analyze data to identify where the disparities are in our community. And I'm happy to say that it wasn't just city staff. We actually pulled in providers, and the YWCA of Glendale Pasadena was taking the lead on this initiative. We also really want to make sure that all of our promotional material for the past year, two years, you know, it's translated in multiple languages. It's easy to access by our community members. There are some people that won't have information unless we get this information to them. So we're really doing our best to market our programs and our services and really pull in all our community members. Vision and values, where we want to be, very briefly. We envision an informed and engaged community that unites to prevent and homelessness throughout the city of Glendale. Glendale COC works to prevent and homelessness throughout the city of Glendale through targeted, responsive, comprehensive, coordinated, and accessible prevention and diversion, outreach and supportive services, coupled with available and affordable housing options. So this is where we want to be. We advance social justice through our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and community engagement, education, and empowerment. Our work prioritizes expectancy and urgency, dignity and respect for those we serve, and transparency and integrity in our decision-making. We embrace compassion and empathy by centering evidence-based practices, harm reduction, trauma-informed care, to ensure homelessness is rare, brief, and non-reoccurring. So this is where collectively, as our community members engaged in our sessions, we came up with these, the vision, mission, and the values for our COC under this plan. Next steps, my team will be monitoring the progress of this action plan. We will be reviewing, of course, both qualitative and quantitative data. We'll utilize all the resources that we have available, the data that we have available. We are very focused on improving our, our, our data and the reporting. And we will make sure, of course, to keep Housing Authority and City Council updated on our progress under this action plan. And we'll be working with our community, our, our service providers. We will be hosting data, like a management group committee, where we actually talk to our agencies about their performance, their outcomes, how do we improve their performance and outcomes, so that we're transparent with our agencies on where we would, where we are and where we would like to be. And that's it. And so I'm here today to seek Housing Authority and City Council's approval in, of the action plan and directing our staff to initiate the implementation of the plan according to the outlined priorities and strategies that I briefly went over. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I hope that was short. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like a lot of work went into this report. I'm going to hold my questions still then, but Councilmember Broadman, followed by Councilmember Garbekian.
Okay. Can we start with, well, let's start with funding. I want to talk to you about that, or I want to hear from you about that. So you said 5.4 million, that's the total funding. That's not an annual number, you told me in the briefing. It's kind of what we have right now. And I did ask you, and before I forget, I just want to make sure that after this meeting, I would, I'd like to see what we're actually spending annually and, and, you know, divided by these, these programs. Like, how much are we spending on, you know, rapid rehousing and homeless prevention and transitional, permanent supportive, and maybe what other categories you think, you know, the outreach? Whatever categories you think are most relevant? Because it's hard, you know, I was trying to dig into this 5.4 number, and it's very complicated because you said, "It's not really what we're getting every year," right? Some of it is one time, you know, so I think it's maybe easier to get a sense of like what are, you know, what money we're, we're getting and using to see kind of the expenditure side. So if, if we could get that. But I was going to ask you, so this, you know, if you had an extra million dollars just dropped from, from the heavens, where would it go?
Councilmember Broadman, just to briefly answer your question, it would go towards homeless prevention and rapid rehousing. Because I did try to answer your question today, but I'll definitely, you know, put together a more comprehensive, you know, response on where we're spending. I could definitely tell you that we're spending. Our agencies are always requesting more funding specifically for more rapid rehousing and homeless prevention. There's definitely a need, and city staff makes sure that anything that we allocate to agencies that they're spending under their contract. Any unspent funds get reallocated to other agencies with the approval of our board, and those funds are fully spent down. But of the total of $5.3 million, we only have about 14%, which is our HAP and our Measure H funds. Only about 14% go towards homeless prevention and rapid rehousing. That's direct assistance, which means, you know, rental subsidies or rent arrears. The rest, the $2.9 million funds existing programs. The hundred, of the 157,000 for ESG, only 3% funds homeless prevention. So it's, I mean, really, when you look at the numbers, and you're right, it does help to kind of see where the funding is going. There is a desperate need for more homeless prevention and rapid rehousing programs. I know staffing is another big thing that our nonprofits, our subrecipients would need more funding for. But really, if we don't have funding to support these direct assistant-type programs, then there's no need for staffing, right, to begin with? So, and I did want to briefly say that for Measure H, we did get a little bit over a million dollars in Measure H funding since 2017. So from 2017 to 2023 fiscal year, five years, we've received a little over a million, of which only, well, 69% has been allocated to homeless prevention and rapid rehousing. But that's really tricky, because only in the last year has the city had the flexibility to decide where they want their money to go. In the past, we were always kind of, we had to stick with in specific strategies. So in the last year, we've been working with the county to make sure that the majority of our funding is being allocated to rapid rehousing and homeless prevention. And we're hoping that the 2425 funding also aligns with our local priorities, which is homeless prevention and rapid rehousing.
Okay. Next one is on goals. Could you bring up that slide that had the, had the goals you're setting out? It mentioned functional zero and... One thing on this is, I'd like to know what our baseline is. So when you, is our baseline, you know, the last point in time count for unsheltered homeless? Because it was 80, right? Is that, is that going to be the basis for that 30% reduction?
Councilmember Broadman, the basis for the functional zero would be the number of people...
No, I mean the decrease unsheltered homelessness. It says 30%, so I'm saying, what's the baseline for that?
Baseline would be 80.
80, okay.
The 80 that we accounted for.
And increase shelter bed capacity by 80%, what's the baseline there?
Baseline would be the last year as well. So we had 99 people that were sheltered in that program, in our programs during the night of the count. So the 80% capacity would be to increase, well, if you look at the, if you look at the numbers, the 80% capacity would basically put you over. So you would be able to essentially, in an ideal, you know, world, you would be able to house all 80 clients that were unhoused last year that you came across, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, that's where I'm a little confused, because the functional, so we talked about this in the briefing. The functional zero means we have enough beds to house all the people, you know, theoretically, that are, that are unhoused. As you said, we have, we had 80 in the last point in time. Whether that's the real number, but that's what we had in our point in time. And then we have 81 available, I guess, through the hotel program. So we are at functional zero.
We are at functional zero when it comes to the unhoused number. But functional zero is a bit complicated, because it, you're right. It does include providing enough shelter, right, for those who are unhoused, being able to quickly move them into some type of a sheltering program. But functional zero also looks at long-term, not just temporary housing. Like, what happens to those individuals when you bring them into your temporary housing program? Are you able to prevent them from ending up back on this? Like, the recidivism is also included in that. But to answer your question, and I hope I can answer this. At this time, we have made a huge, significant stride in, in truly saying that we've come to functional zero. And we won't know that until the next year or the next two years, because we'll be able to have our homeless count numbers. And with the increase in our congregant sheltering, we'll be able to have better data to truly say the city of Glendale has reached functional zero. Because we'll be pulling in data from other programs too, if, if that makes sense. But we are making a significant step forward with our hotel program. I mean, it's helped us significantly in the last month. We have really been able to connect with people because we know where we can put them, at least temporarily. Whereas in the past, we didn't have that opportunity.
It would be good here to have as a footnote somewhere just what, what the baseline numbers are. So we can look at this in the future and say, "Did we get, did we achieve it? What number are we starting with?"
Absolutely. In our, in our update to Council, Council and Housing Authority, we'll be able to provide the baseline, and then we'll be able to provide an update as well.
Okay. And then the last thing I wanted to ask is just about mental health. Like, what can we, we know, you know, we hear about Didi Hirsch being basically at capacity. They're not able to take anybody new. So what do we do? What are some of our options to try to get more mental health capacity for our clients?
We, I know that Essentia, our lead agency for our CES system, they do have a mental health case manager, and they have a hospital liaison that tries to connect individuals through DMH. However, we are, as the city, as our COC, we are cut off from some of those services that the county offers. For example, there's beds that are available through DMH for clients who have some type of mental health or substance abuse. So it's very challenging connecting our clients through those, those groups or getting clients connected to those services. We have tried to reach out to Didi Hirsch. We're trying to see if we can partner with Didi Hirsch locally so that we have more direct access. There are other mental health providers in the community, you know, through the hospitals. We have nonprofit organizations. But we need more intensive mental health support so that they can urgently respond and, and help our, our clients. We're really just vocal. We've been partnering, participating at county meetings, trying to see how we can do a better job of collaborating. And you know, with the Measure A, you know, if that goes through, hopefully, we'll have greater access to mental health services in the county.
Right, well, if you could, you know, at the right time, you know, come back to us and, you know, and, and tell us what, what you propose. Like, what do we need to do? Because we keep hearing this. And like, I know you're trying different things, but how can we help make sure that we break this bottleneck? Because the mental health, we're increasingly realizing, you know, this is, this is a big part of the problem, right?
Absolutely, yes. We are trying to work with local providers who have beds available but are contracted through the county, through DMH and DHS, which I'll speak more on once, you know, if we can make progress and finalize kind of our, our plans. We're trying to see if we could secure some more beds locally for our outreach teams. But, you know, it's just in the preliminary stages. So we're really trying to do our best to see where those resources are and how we can come up with a plan and present it to Council and Housing Authority.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Councilmember Garbekian?
Yes, so just to follow up on what Councilman Broadman was saying. We are kind of functional zero this year because we have the funding to achieve the three goals that we have, the decrease unsheltered homelessness by 30%. We can do that because we have the funding. Increase shelter bed capacity by 80%. So basically, we are there this year. God knows how much, I mean, the, the next year will be depending on how much budget we will have because our budget goes up and down based on what, what kind of services, what kind of budget we get from the, from the state. Am I correct?
Councilmember Garbekian, yes. I'm just really hesitant to say we're right at functional zero because we are there in terms of temporary housing, which we didn't have last year. But when I, when I think about functional zero, I also want to give it some time to see, okay, we're providing this resource, what next? Are we truly at a place where we have various types of resources that could support clients from the time that they become homeless to when we exit them from our system? So at this time, I would say we're close to functional zero with the way we have appropriated our, our budget this year for the Glendale Hotel Program. But I would probably need to give, we need to give it a little bit time to see how this program plays out and what our numbers look like in the upcoming year.
So I, I have a general question for the hotel program. How do you choose, do you interview the person that you were going, going to give a voucher to? Do you analyze their state of the mind? You know, if they are, they have substance abuse or they're mentally stable to put them in a hotel? How, how does that work? Because if you have, you know, mental health issues or you have substance abuse issues, how do they survive 30 days in a hotel without causing, are they, is it causing any issues for hotel operators or other patrons? Just, just a general, general information.
Sure, Councilmember Garbekian, yes. We do operate under a housing-first approach. It doesn't mean that we don't require services from clients, but our first, first thing to do is to find them sheltered, to get them stabilized. So oftentimes, where our outreach teams come across an individual, that will be the first thing that they assess them for. Of course, they do assess them for mental health. For example, our police department has a DMH, a licensed clinician that will assess the clients. You know, they have to be able to, be able to live in the hotel, you know, to, to be fully, you know, functional. They, you know, sometimes clients are a better fit for 51-50 holds. There's, you know, we come across different clients. But for the, for the most part, we do assess the clients to make sure that they can maintain their temporary housing. And then within that 30 days, or up to the 30 days that they're in the program, my team, Tommy, who is our outreach coordinator, and Essentia's team, they actually work with the client and evaluate them and put together some type of a long-term plan. Sometimes we come across families. And so those families are connected to Home Again LA within a day. L.A. within a day. The response time, you know, takes about a day for the families to get connected to the providers. So we make sure there's some type of case management happening within the 30 days. We don't just, you know, give them the hotel voucher and hope, you know, for the best. So that's, that's been the process so far.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. On page 15, you speak of putting together a comprehensive financial framework for '24 to 2027. When do you plan to have that? Because we're almost end of... So it's under priority areas and strategies. It's page 15 of the report, or 24 of the 32.
Yes.
Right underneath budget...
Oh, yes.
Says the Glendale Homeless Action Plan requires a comprehensive financial framework to meet its identified priority areas. And then you speak of the amount that's allocated for '24, '25. When can we expect to have the framework back?
Mayor Asatirian, when we start receiving new funding sources and we start RFP-ing out for services, we are anticipating funding from our HAP funds. HAP round five was just approved. Our local action plan, we, this past year, we also put together a regional action plan with the county, Pasadena, Long Beach, and Glendale as part of our HAP five state funds. So we were just awarded the HAP five state funds. We're also anticipating our Measure H funds. Those should be coming in soon for '24, '25, and hopefully '25, '26 soon. You know, I'm excited to also see what happens with Measure A and other funding sources that we hope to receive in the next year. So as we're getting new funding sources, we'll be able to put together more of a comprehensive financial framework or plan. And then that, those funding allocations, we'll be prioritizing based on our, based on this G-HAP, based on the action plan priorities. So we know where, where those gaps are, if that makes sense. Because most of this funding has already been committed, but we are anticipating new grant funds that will be RFP-ing out to our, our community.
So I think it would be helpful if we, if, aside from the funding that you're getting allocated to this or being able to get from different places, when we approach whether it's our end of the year or our budget session, part of your comprehensive financial plan for homeless services is brought forth as part of the budget when we're talking about our services. And I know Mr. Broadman spoke of, you know, getting a million bucks from the heavens. We can possibly get money from our budget if there's a need for it, that you think that, you know, a certain amount would help boost our homeless or mental health services, whatever we can do. And then I think, I know you had a slide on marketing?
Yes.
Did we, did we end up hiring at least an hourly communications person for community services in parks until we, like, sort the rest of it out?
Not yet, Madam Mayor, but they're working on it.
I think with everything that comes out of that department, that should probably be a priority. And then, I know we talked about this during the briefing, but just for my colleagues, I had posed the question if our local system or data tracks the Armenian population, because the census just puts us as white, and our team has actually put in the request and gotten it to be part of the tracking now. So moving forward, not just the city of Glendale, but the county and, and other departments would be able to have access to that data as well.
Yes, Mayor Asatirian. We're hoping that the county does follow. It seems like they will, but we'll provide an update on that once it's finalized. But the city will definitely be tracking that locally.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Do I have a motion?
We do have two speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Our first speaker is Herbert Mulano.
Thank you. Thank you.
You have three minutes.
May I ask, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Mulano. It is a pleasure to hear a presentation where the concepts of strategic planning are being applied, to actually be able to see the SWOT analysis being created. And I think that the city should continue in basically giving the staff additional training on the concept of strategic planning, where you have measurable objectives and activities to try to meet those objectives. So first of all, my congratulations on that, and also, it's very, I'm very happy to see a City Council looking at a more comprehensive 360-degree view of the problem of homelessness and how it ties in. Because if you were simply to take what you find on televisions, on ads, like for Proposition 33, they'll simply say affordable housing and homelessness, as if there was a direct tie-in. And my argument here is that it is a much more complex issue, much more than what is presented, especially when you have the problem of deep poverty, where some individuals at the most are getting $650 in total income a month. So affordability has two sides, the income that the person makes and the actual cost of the rental. And when you're a typical individual who basically loses their, or gets evicted, has an income of about $2,700 a month. So if you were to take one-third of it as being applicable to, to housing, obviously, an individual who loses a job would have an immediate situation of unaffordability. Now, I would like to encourage the city to, to improve on its assessment tools, especially in additional training, particularly for the yearly homeless count that takes place in January. I've listened to some of the presentations last year and some of the data presented, and on part of the statistics, I read something along the lines that homeless individuals responded to the question as to why are you homeless, and a certain percentage says, because I had a rent increase, without any validation, without any more substantive questions that really determine, questions such as, are you on drugs? How long have you been on drugs? When was the last time you, you had a job? How much did the job pay you per, you know, per month? Or questions such as, were you just let off from prison? How long ago? One individual that I interviewed that was homeless on, right where Panera is, on Californian brand, had been released from prison the year before and landed where he used to live in Fontana. But he happened to have a relative that he thought lived in Glendale. He wound up in Glendale and wound up homeless. So what's the responsibility of the city to situations like that when homeless people are coming in? And the interview process needs to be more deep and more nuanced so you could get, so you can get valid data. And by the way, I recommend this book for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulano. Your time is up.
Thank you. Who's next?
Our next speaker is Dr. Laura Duncan from Essentia.
Boy, this font is small. Good early evening, Housing Authority members, City Council members, Mayor Asatirian. And I would like to say that is with great respect and the intent to inform you and the community that Essentia, the lead agency for the Glendale Continuum of Care, is excited about, very much in agreement with, and is positioned to play a significant role in decreasing homelessness via the Glendale Homeless Action Plan. With respect to two of the plan's three main goals, which are to decrease unsheltered homelessness by 30% and homelessness by 80%, Essentia has, one, secured funding to add 20 more shelter beds to our 45-bed facility in '25, '26, bringing it to 65. And one, this to pertain to the city's plan to invest in long-term service delivery infrastructure. Two, when we opened the shelter in '06, '07, Glendale funded 50% of its operational costs and had access to 20 to 30% of the shelter beds every year. Realizing the city has funding constraints, today, Glendale funds 6% of our shelter costs and yet still receives 30% of the shelter beds, as we have always prioritized people who are staying in Glendale unhoused. With respect to the city's priority area strategy to increase transparency, Essentia has a four-star and platinum seal of transparency, the highest ratings possible, on the unbiased Charity Navigator and GuideStar websites. These are tools people use to look up charities that are transparent and they can confidently trust. I've heard in the last two public meetings that there is a lack of mental health services, again today, so three, in Glendale. And I want to just inform that Arsenaleluded to, Essentia has been raising private dollars to provide psychiatric services, trauma therapy, art therapy for children and the families we serve for the better part of two decades. And since 2021, we've added occupational therapy services. We have several clinical consultants who are constants for us. Last year alone, we provided 832 trauma therapy hours, 87 art therapy hours to children, 92 telepsychiatry hours, and 160 occupational therapy hours. Additionally, we have a partnership with comprehensive community health centers, who has a federally qualified health clinic in Glendale that brings a mobile unit to Essentia on a monthly basis in order to provide both health and mental health services to our clients. These services are available to any and all people enrolled in Glendale's Continuum of Care. Couple other points, and I'll be done. Essentia has been operating evening and weekend street outreach programs up to 11:00 P.M.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is up.
You can, it looks like all my colleagues are looking for you to finish your statement, so go ahead, please take your time to finish.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So we are running street outreach in other parts of the county evenings and weekends up to 11:00 P.M., not Sundays. And finally, we've been collecting and monitoring racial equity data for years now, and if there's anything we can do to help with the city with monitoring this, please let, let us know. And then that was it. Due to time constraints, I'll stop there and thank you for your time and attention, as well as answering any questions anyone may have.
I have one question.
That was fast talking.
Can you please, doctor, tell me the hours and days of your street outreach?
Well, in Glendale, it's 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 P.M., and in some other areas, it's 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 P.M. The days are in Glendale, Monday through Friday, and in some other areas, we're, we're Monday through Saturday. Totally different staff, different budgets.
So the reason for the hours not being the same as in other areas is because of budgeting and staffing?
Funding.
Funding?
Yeah.
Okay. And these are all, the street outreach is done in person, correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I, I know you say, oh, yes, but, you know, during COVID, there was some work from home.
Not with street outreach, not for us.
Okay, well, that's certainly news to me, if that's the case. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is that it? Great. While I have the homeless services staff here, I think this has been kind of ongoing. I've raised it, I raised it a long time ago, but I think because of bus route change by Adventist Hospital, initially, the complaints were coming from residents in that area, noting that there's an increase in the unhoused population. And recently, I had posted about the plan that you have in front of us today, and I got several messages, again, noting if we can take a look at the area around Adventist Hospital, it seems that there's patients that are going in.
Sorry, sorry.
And then when they're coming out, because I guess they used to take the bus and go elsewhere, they're just kind of staying. Whatever we can do to make sure that we're helping provide services would be great. Thank you. With that, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the housing plan for City Council.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Broadman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatirian?
Yes.
And I can move the same for the Housing Authority.
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Housing Authority members Ajinian?
Yes.
Asatirian?
Yes.
Broadman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Parazian? Chair Kasakian?
Yes.
All right, and what's next?
Adjournment.
Move to adjourn for housing?
Second.
Are we rolling through to the next one?
Move to adjourn for council?
Oh, move to adjourn for council.
Second.
Good.
Okay.